I'll call the Salina Planning, City Planning Commission meeting for February 7th to order. Our first agenda item is approval of summary minutes from January 17th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
I thought it was gonna die for a lack of a second there.
All those in favor say aye.
I was really worried about that.
Thank you very much. Item number two, the continued discussion of the public use zoning district.
John, if you could go to that attachment and call that up. But I wanted to focus on it. We've hashed through most of the uses and all that, but the, the attachment relating to sign Well, there was some discussion at the last meeting, we had this in your packet, and we attached the minutes from a previous meeting where it was discussed of essentially on arterial street situations or the larger campuses. There was some discussion about, probably need to keep going, John, to get to the illuminated sign section. Okay, right, as we discussed, this was drafted primarily for the elementary school sites, and it has a sign height of eight feet and an area not to exceed, basically, four by eight or thirty-two square feet. And there was some discussion at a previous meeting of essentially doubling that to something on the order of sixty-four square feet and having a height of about twenty feet. And that, that might work for a standard identification sign or bulletin board sign. But in light of some of the discussions we've had with the school district and Mr. Kennedy and the city's own need for signage at some of its facilities, John, do you have that possible addition language that you could put on the screen? It's the one that deals with the sign regulations. That's it, right there. And the, just kinda like to walk you through this because this, this would apply to anything from the bicentennial center to the, if there was a future county expo center, if there was a high school campus or a state-owned facility. But if, if we had a public use and a public use district and it was located on an arterial street, they could have a, a sign that would be a community information or public events sign, and it could be up to two-hundred square feet in size, not exceed a height of twenty feet, or if it was mounted to a wall, not exceed the height of the building wall. You'd have the choice of either orienting it parallel or perpendicular to the street. The sign would operate only between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Might wanna think about making that 6:00 a.m. Depending on some of our schools and those things, the activities start earlier and earlier. That'd be equipped with dimmer controls that adjust the brightness for day and nighttime conditions. And then item G there, which would probably be pretty consistent with the way the bicentennial center sign operates, but the primary purpose of the sign would be to convey information about upcoming community events or public events. But up to fifteen minutes of any hour could be devoted to use for off-premise commercial business messages. And then the last part just deals with making sure that it's operational and stays that way, and if it doesn't, then it needs to be removed. But the, wanted to get the planning commission's feedback on that concept where that would apply to any potential public use, whether it was city or county or state or school district. It would have to be on an arterial street, and you may have some thoughts about the two-hundred square feet, which is pretty generous. And then the concept of whether a conditional use permit ought to be required or if it simply would be, if these are the parameters and you're in arterial street, that you should just be able to get a, a permit to do that. But I was, we were wondering if, if this was something that you saw as a avenue for addressing some of the high school campuses and even some of the city's facilities that might develop in the future, or the county expo or things of that nature. If you had, the only reason that the bicentennial center happens to have the sign that they do is because it's zoned C3, which is a shopping center district, and the only reason it's zoned for that was so they could get a drinking establishment license, and that's probably not a great reason for the bicentennial center to be zoned for shopping center. So, the likelihood is that all of that area, Oakdale, Kenwood, any future expo center would be a public use type district. So, are there any thoughts about using the conditional use process or establishing these and then allowing that just by right through a sign permit?
I had about three or four quick questions came to mind. Well, at first I was pleased to learn that the bicentennial center is zoned C3 because several of us have advocated converting it to a shopping center, but we're a little late apparently. But anyway.
You could legally convert it to a shopping center without us changing zoning, so.
Are the middle schools on arterial streets?
Technically, Lakewood's frontage is on Lakewood Circle. It doesn't technically have frontage on Ohio, and certainly South Middle is not on an arterial street.
So, the, so if some parent group wanted to have an electronic sign at one of those schools, then what we're talking about here would not solve that problem.
If they did, it would have to be the same scale and everything that would be allowed at an elementary school, which would be essentially a, a four-by-eight type sign that would be in, out front and would have a, a space on it where you could have an electronic changeable message. This is, is more along the lines of what this Salina bicentennial center has in terms of scale and height and area, so it would function more that way. But the, rather than trying to identify campuses or locations, it seemed like the types of streets where this would be most appropriate would be arterials where you're already having these types of signs for commercial businesses like Ohio Street.
Are we talking about putting the colleges and universities into public use districts?
There is a, there is a university district classification already, so Kansas Wesleyan, St. John's Military, and Kansas State Salina are currently zoned university district, and that, that probably wouldn't change.
But do those have a sign regulation like this, or have we?
They, they do, which we, it, it's in your packet, and it actually, I, I put a check mark by it in your, in your packet on the handout, but they, they have a provision that specifically deals with outdoor football and soccer stadiums, and they allow up to two signs not to exceed one-hundred-and-sixty square feet if they're located within fifty feet of the outdoor stadium. I don't think presently any of them are, are taking advantage of that, and we do have, there are some limitations about what we can regulate and, on the Kansas State Salina campus because it is state property. And so, we have some zoning authority, but it's, it's limited, and we actually have no building permit or building code authority on K-State Salina's campus.
Does this conditional use concept address scoreboards for the schools?
Well, again, score, scoreboards are not considered signs because signs are oriented to the exterior and to the general public, and scoreboards are interior, and so they're, they're simply part of a stadium or athletic field. So, that would not be considered a sign. But this, this would be if at the Central High campus, there was a desire to put out a sign on Crawford that said, "These are the upcoming special events or scheduled events at the Salina Stadium." This type of, this is designed to take something like this and, and apply it to the public use district. I think there was some discussion at the last meeting about if we have a good set of ground rules and everything, is there really a need for a conditional use permit and neighbor notification and all that? So, that, that would be the first thing that we don't want input on. If you think that that is something that if the parameters are, are set and you fall within that, that you should be able to do that with a sign permit, then, then the language in there about the planning commission made by conditional use permit could be eliminated. But it just, just depends on whether you feel like you wanna be the reviewer for that or set the ground rules and let staff review it.
The two-hundred square feet is a little bit bigger than we talked about at our previous meeting, you know? I think, I think it was mentioned sixty-four square feet. Explain the two-hundred feet. Two-hundred feet seems pretty large to me, maybe more than we would want, but it may not be more than needed for some other locations, I don't know.
Yeah, part of it was going back and looking at size of the bicentennial center sign, thinking about a expo. I mean, it, it's kind of a, may not exceed, there's also a cost factor involved. It's pretty, I mean, the, if, if you stop and think about it, the average size of a sign, say on South Ninth Street for restaurants and things like that, is about in the hundred-and-thirty square foot range. But again, if you're trying to get, those are static signs, and if you're trying to get some sort of changeable copy and have it visible so traffic traveling at thirty-five or forty miles an hour can see the information, I think two-hundred square feet is, is more than generous, and we may want to reduce that, but that, that's just a starting point.
Dean, you and I had this conversation a number of years ago, but the, the square footage of the sign does not include the architectural or landscape work around it, is that correct?
Right, it's just, we draw a box around the message area. So, if you have an ornate thing on top or something like that, that doesn't count.
Brickwork underneath and?
Right. It's just the, the area that conveys a message.
Well, first of all, from the school's perspective, we'd love to see this possibility as we've seen it at many other schools. It's becoming pretty prevalent at many schools, at Central and South High School. Right now, I don't see it necessary for South Middle because of its particular location. An elementary-sized configuration to announce events might be more appropriate there, and somebody's right, Lakewood is not, we think of it on Ohio, but it's actually not. We, we, we're on Lakewood Circle, which is a small street that goes in there, so it, at some point, if we ever acquired Ohio Street frontage, then it would be appropriate there possibly, so.
Yeah. Technically, the address for the middle school is like eleven-thirty-five Lakewood Circle or something like that.
Right, and there's no place for us to put a sign.
It's not on Ohio.
Right.
Has there been a discussion about, in the past, about restricting the distance of these signs away from stoplights? I, I, as silly as it sounds, I had a guy tell me he pulled up to Broadway and Crawford and that cashway's light flash red, and he took off, and because of lots of stoplights right there by it, and, and he pulled out in the middle of the intersection, dang near got in a wreck.
Yeah, that, that is one of the, that's one of the ongoing debates about the changeable copy signs and those types of things is they're, they are distracting. And so, you know, part, part of that, you can't, that site with the check caching service there is, Speedy Cash is so small, there's limited spaces of where, you know, you can put a sign on a, a campus like South High or Central High or a future expo center or something like that. You're gonna have a lot more room and ability to place that. But that, that is a reason why some jurisdictions don't allow the electronic changeable copy signs or severely limit them because it's been demonstrated that they can distract drivers. And part of that, it's, it's like having a good driver and a bad driver. You can have the technology, and it's just a matter of whether you have a well-disciplined sign or it's, it's a sign, it's not supposed to flash and, and have intermittent blinking and all those things. It's supposed to gradually change its message. But there is no, there is no separation requirement between stoplights or intersections or things like that and signs, either static or changeable copy.
I can see that not to be a problem at, at Central or South High School, but you could place a sign far enough away from the streetlight, but I don't know where else there would be a problem on these schools.
Rather than trying to spell out the types of facilities, we just said that it has to be a facility on the arterial street because that seemed to make it the most compatible. I think the two-hundred square feet is maybe on the high side of what people would actually need or, or want, and I think the, the real question would be whether you wanna be in the business of, of reviewing them or just establish the ground rules and then allow sign permits to be issued.
Well, I think the ground rules, the two-hundred square feet seems pretty high. I mean, if we're gonna lay out just a blanket thing that says that you can come in and be, and you're gonna be issued a permit, a sign permit, I mean, it sounds to me like everybody's saying two-hundred is, I mean, that may be something that we would wanna review, maybe it's a hundred or a hundred-and-fifty, and then if you're getting over a hundred-and-fifty, then it's?
One way to do it is to have a lower number and say if you wanna exceed that, then you have to get a conditional use permit.
I mean, give me an idea of two-hundred square feet. What sign Salina's two-hundred square feet?
It's hard to, to find one that big, that, that's just a static sign. I said, the, the typical signs up and down the South Ninth Corridor are in the range of a hundred-and-thirty to a hundred-and-fifty square feet.
So, you're saying if somebody came in tomorrow and applied for a sign on Ohio Street and it was two-hundred square feet, there's nothing that, the city would just approve it and we'd be done?
Yeah, it is, because our, our sign regulations in our commercial areas are based on the, the amount of building frontage that you have on a street. So, we were looking at the vacant lot that was east of McDonald's there. It's got frontage on Crawford, Mountview, and Faith Drive. And if you put a building on that lot, it would have building frontage on those three streets, and based on the way that that's done, four square feet of sign area per lineal foot of building frontage, some of our sites, you could have up to twelve-hundred square feet of sign area. Now, nobody does that primarily because it's too expensive. That, that is what controls it, but the, this is different, that it, it sets a maximum for a sign, but in our commercial areas, we don't have a, generally a maximum for any one sign. We just have it for amount of square footage that you can have total on a site, and then the business owner can decide and divide that up amongst wall signs or pole signs or things of that nature.
Before a day, you'd want more than fifteen minutes worth of commercials on it.
To further extend on that a little bit, Todd, the C5, C6, and C7 districts have a limitation of two-hundred feet, two-hundred square feet if you wanna be in the frontyard setback, in the building setback. If you exceed two-hundred square feet, then you have to have the same setback as the principal structure. So, say Walmart wants to have a two-hundred-square-foot sign, then that sign can no longer be closer to Ninth Street, it would have to be back off of Ninth Street a little bit further. So, that's another area where the two-hundred-feet variable comes into play, but generally, we don't see that, the high of a number. I, I think the only sign permit I have ever issued that's over two-hundred square feet is the Menards sign off of Interstate. That's the only one that I can think of that's over two-hundred square feet.
I guess, I, my thing would be, is this, are we okay with driving down the road? If Walmart has to wherewith, about, to put a two-hundred-square-foot sign, exactly two-hundred square feet, do we wanna drive down Ninth Street and go, dang, we voted on that that was okay to happen, and they've got the right frontage, but man, that looks, that looks crazy? I mean, I, I think it, it's gotta be, at some point, I drive down the street and go, okay, that looks fine, and then at some point, I go, gosh, I wish I could've had some input, or the community could've had some input on whether we want a two-hundred-square-foot Walmart sign or Target or Applebee's or whatever it may be. I mean, that just seems, if you're telling me that the Menard sign's two-hundred square feet, I can't imagine that sign being that much, being lower, twenty-foot sign sitting on, on Ninth Street.
I don't know exactly the square footage. It was over two-hundred square feet, though. I mean, that, that sign would not be?
But, but let me clarify, those, those particular regulations are already in place. We're not talking about those, are we?
Right, I was using?
Those are already in place. We're talking about signs for public use facilities, schools. See, right now, those regu, those, those codes, the city already has the right to make the determination on size of signs for Walmart, Target, Lowe's, those places, commercial. That's, that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about expanding that and what might be appropriate on public use facilities.
Why would we, why would we have two-hundred square feet there, then? I still don't understand. If nobody's ever gonna do that, why do we have up to two-hundred square feet?
What's the bicentennial centers?
Do not have a precise figure for that.
It's pretty?
But if you're, if you're looking at, at things that are truly campuses, like, most people don't realize how big Menard's sign is because of the distance it is from everything, the speed at which you're traveling. If, if Menards was sitting on Crawford, if their sign was sitting on Crawford in front of Central High, you would really notice it, but you don't notice it because it's in, in the context. So, the, the options are to, to start with a lower number and say if you exceed that, then you need to get a conditional use permit. The, the two-hundred square foot was with the idea that you might construct a expo center at Schilling and Ohio, and it would be on a huge site, and you'd have this sign that's well back from the road, and in order to be seen, it would need to be two-hundred square foot to have the message conveyed. But, but the alternative to that is just to simply have a much smaller maximum and say if you wanna exceed that, then you need to come talk to the planning commission and give your justification. So, there's, there's certainly a number, like a hundred-and-twenty square feet or even lower than that, to, to say, this is what you can have by right, and if you wanna exceed that, then you can come make your case to the planning commission.
You know, from, if we're looking at, and I can't talk to those other agencies because I really don't have feel for them, but from the school's perspective, I, I think, you know, we, we could certainly live with something far less than two-hundred. I don't see ever putting that kind of sign.
What about tweaking the regulations as we've been looking at, and we know that we think the signage is too small? Let's, let's fix that part, and then when it comes to these other situations, then the conditional use applies.
Yeah, I think, we talked about?
We think the signage in the schools, at least on arterial streets, what I was hearing, what we had them look up in the minutes for us, so there's a set of minutes in there from prior meeting.
So, sixty-four.
It talked about sixty-four square feet.
And that's the question, is sixty-four square feet big enough?
I'm having, what is Simmons', it's Simmons First Bank, Simmons First Bank down on South Ohio. What's the size of that sign? Do you have a feel for that?
No, but I could send?
I think I stopped by there and measured it. I think it's, but it's been so long that we?
Bank four or six?
Bank four.
Yeah, and the thing about the bank six sign is that it's, 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 technically, it's a ground sign, but it's a ground sign that's, that's way up because it's, it's perched on a base that's, that's much higher, but Dustin can get that, that figure for you. But the, we, our response is that most, most businesses have a hard time putting up as much signage as what our code allows, and what, the way that the planning commission has addressed that over time is that most of our new development on South Ninth Street is part of planned districts, and so you have to bring in your plans and your signed plans to the planning commission at the time that you're proposing to build something. So, Applebee's or Chili's or any of those restaurants up and down there brought their plans in, and their signage was limited to what they presented the planning commission, so they don't have the unlimited four-square-feet per building frontage. Their, their signage is tied to their site plan, and so that has been up and down Ninth Street, and that's how you keep from having the sign wars where the next guy says, well, I need to be five feet higher than the, this guy here because they're blocking my sign. The, the planning commission's approach over the years has been to just have a level playing field and say, these are the rules. You can have one pole sign, it can be this height and within this many square feet, and that, that's why the signage on South Ninth is pretty uniform because the planning commission has generally looked at all those on a, on a case-by-case basis, and then they ask staff, and we, we have a handout that we've given the planning commission that basically lists just about every sign on South Ninth Street that says, here's what everybody else has, and here's how this compares with that. And so, everyone is, as long as the, the rules are level for everyone, then everyone's been pretty satisfied with that.
Let me offer a suggestion here. What if, I, I like the idea of let's reduce this size a little bit and then have it conditional if you want it bigger, and then you bring in drawings and show you what it looks like and everything, but make the sign size much smaller for approved without coming before the planning commission. Maybe a hundred square feet makes more sense. To me, Patrick is pretty familiar with signs, and when we talked before, he suggested sixty-four square feet, and I think he was talking about changeable copy sign at that size. So, if you put a CHS or a SHS above it, it's certainly a hundred square feet, it'd be plenty for what we're trying to do, and I think most institutions, now, it might be different for some of the bigger schools like K-State or something, I don't know, but they could come before the planning commission, say, hey, we'd like to have a hundred-and-fifty-foot square sign, but a hundred'd be plenty to start with, and that's a more reasonable size. That'd be my proposal, and then I like the, the rest of the sign regulations as they're proposed, frankly.
Well, I had understood that as far as it went for the two high schools, that maybe tho, those were too small of constrictions. What Commissioner Mike Sullivan suggested in those prior minutes of the sixty-four-square-foot sign, that might be more appropriate, and those two?
That's what I'm talking about, that's my suggestion. If we go to a hundred, it would give you sixty-four foot of changeable copy, and then you could put your school name above it and be under a hundred, is the way I see it. Because that, I think, Dean, that's right, static signing would count as part of the, of the size as well as the changeable.
Right, and I think what Patrick was talking about was the?
Electronic change.
Message area being eight by eight or two by six?
Give yourself another thirty-six foot above that for your central high school. I think that'd work fine.
I mean?
The, the other part of this that we thought was important, especially for the level playing field aspect, is that we, we have a, a code provision that allows the Salina bicentennial center to have off-premise commercial messages on their sign. And so, if, what, what this does is it, it basically provide, provides for that, if you could scan down, John, and just basically says, you know, it's, it's intended to be a community events or public events sign, but you can have off-premise commercial business messages as, as part of that, and again, that's, that's the level playing field approach.
And when we talked about that, it'd be like, it's Central, we could have Pepsi-Cola up there occasionally on the sign as a supporter of the activities or something.
Right, and Salina bicentennial center has Ramada Inn?
Right, and Chee Chee Pizza.
Messages and Coca-Cola and different things like that that, that come up periodically along with their other announcements of upcoming events, so.
Wouldn't fifteen minutes be limiting the bicentennial center?
I think so. I don't know, maybe they would have to adjust to conform. I have to see what their, we'd have to see what their, if there are specific contracts or, or how that works, or if they've contractually obligated themselves to give so many. But, again, this is all proposed, it's not in stone, so if, if, if it needs to be half and half or? and half, or whatever, it, from just the different research we did for other, other provisions, the, the three-quarters community events and one-quarter off-premise business messages seem to be like a reasonable balance, but...
Then that, too, could be brought before the planning commission if you wanted to exceed that, couldn't it? For exception. I mean, I don't see us wanting to exceed that, but somebody that wanted, needed to...
Yeah, I think that the whole, the whole idea behind this is that these electronic changeable copies signs, and they are, they are beneficial because they're providing the community with information about public events, and that, that needs to be, I mean, that's, that's the primary justification for, our high school campuses have plays and athletic events and things like that, and it gets them an opportunity to convey that, but...
I think we can make a motion to move this forward, is what we could, I believe. Couldn't we?
Do we need to take any action on this, Dean? Or you, if we can move forward from our comment?
Well, what, what we would like is to say that if you tell us you like this approach, you'd like us to blend it in with the other language that we have for elementary schools and things of that nature, and if you tell us that you like, you like the idea of having a smaller sign area that you can do by write, and then come to you if you want to go over that, then we'll go back and, and package that together, and probably, I think, at your next meeting, we would have a entire public use package for you to make a recommendation on.
So, the suggestion is 100?
I'm fine with 100. I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, so, we're...
In this conditional remark here, and you're in the reg itself, that...
Well, I think... Make anything under it.
In the reg, but change that to 100 and leave the rest of it alone.
Anything under 100 does not require conditional, it's permitted. Anything over 100 would require...
But you need to specify the 64-foot as being the maximum for this, one type?
I don't, I don't think so.
Let, let them decide what, what portion of...
If somebody for advertising would pay for your sign. They may pay for your sign and put the advertising...
I'm saying, 100 square feet now is expensive, but in 10 years, I mean, that could be...
That's right. Have to look in the future.
So, Dustin says that, now, what was discussed with the elementary schools was that you'd have a, a four-by-eight sign, and, and two-by-eight of it would be static, and then two-by-eight of it would be electronic message center. The, the sign there at Simmons Bank is about 50 square feet?
Yeah, total.
Total. And half of that is electronic changeable copy, and the other half is static. So, the, the total sign area exclusive of the base and all is 50 square feet.
It's 25 of interchangeable, 25 square feet interchangeable, then?
Mm-hmm.
Five by five.
Is that all it is, is 25? It seemed like it made you a little bigger now, maybe.
Simmons? Simmons is 25 for their electronic message center sign.
I mean, it's all a matter of scale and where it's placed. I wouldn't think either of those would be out of place at either South or Central High School if they're positioned appropriately, you know, and they're right on the street. You could, you could complain, but I think they're both fine.
We're, we're gonna pass the elevations of that, so you can all, all look at that, but the elevations are there and all, all the dimensions.
You think about that screen right back there, eight by eight.
What do you need to move this forward? It doesn't matter to me. I'm not, I mean, if you want to go lower, I, I said, I suggest, I can suggest less if you want, just, we just need to advance it.
Yeah. I think 100 is fine, Dean. You can put that in there, and anything above and beyond 100 would need to require a conditional use permit.
Agreed. I have, I have one question. It, it doesn't pertain, because I know we've talked about scoreboards, but if we're looking at the overall comprehensive public use, gonna review for the next one, I'd like the commission's input, the other commissioners' input on this, that, looking in the minutes about my question about this last, last meeting in regards to signage on the scoreboards, that if a scoreboard is also used as signage, then it would be subject now to the sign regulations. The only discussion, I want to get your thoughts on this, is that many times, I think, these scoreboards are, are sponsored by, say, a beverage drink or something, and that is part, so that they don't have to be purchased by the school, and that is part of the agreement, you have then a very small kind of advertisement on the back in, in agreement for the sponsorship. Now, that, I think, we may need to talk about, because I think that should be permissible. You know, if you're using the entire back of the sign to plaster with different advertisements, that's one thing, but if you're looking at a sponsorship, people pay for the billboard, I'd like to, to discuss the schools being able to do that, so then that way, you can have the scoreboard paid for.
This doesn't, this doesn't deal with scoreboards.
This, this doesn't, but because, I caught this in the minutes from last time, for looking at an overall kind of use, I don't know if maybe that language, if we agree, that needs to be reviewed as well.
That's what the 15 minutes per hour was for, I thought.
Well, that, that assumes it's, it's changeable copy, but if you, if, I mean, I don't believe that's the case today, but if, if the, our own Dean Evans Stadium has a, a scoreboard in it, and that scoreboard has been, had sponsorships on it for, ever since the stadium's been open, but there's no advertising on the back of that, or on the walls of Dean Evans Stadium or anything that, that advertise off-premise businesses, it's, it's simply a scoreboard that's oriented to the, the baseball park. So, what, what you would be talking about is if the scoreboard at the south end of Salina Stadium, if, if that has McDonald's and Coca-Cola on it, on the inside, and it's oriented towards the spectators, that's a scoreboard. As soon as you put a sign on the backside of it that faces the homes on McAdams, that makes it a off-premise advertising sign. And that, that's a question of whether you want to go there or not.
And your thought was yes or no, Maxwell? What were you...
My, my thought is that I think that it's, it's going to be standard, at least for these companies, let's say Pepsi-Cola, to, to, you'll want to have something on the backside, because they've, they've essentially paid for the scoreboard, and, and that's a, that's a sponsorship deal. And I would think that in a situation like that, that may be reviewable or conditional because it's a, it's a sponsorship. I think that there's a, a difference between that and plastering the whole backside of a scoreboard with, you know, selling it out like advertising space. You know, that I don't agree with. But something, whether it be specified on size or to one sponsor, like maybe something that we want to look at as part of this whole thing.
So, we could say something that as long as it, it's a scoreboard, as long as it has, on the backside, it has something that doesn't exceed X number of square feet, and if it does, then it's a sign, or a billboard, essentially.
Right. Something allowable there for sponsorship inclusion on the back of the scoreboard, that wouldn't be considered an advertising...
What we need is a good, agreed-upon definition of what a scoreboard, what constitutes a scoreboard. But I don't, yeah, I don't think we're looking for a specific motion, or, but the, the direction I see is, is that as long as we're 100 square feet or less, it would be something that would be issued a sign permit, and you would be eligible for that, and if you want to exceed 100 square feet, then you make your case to the planning commission. But the consensus seemed to be liking the limitation for arterial streets, and we can start with 15 minutes per hour, and then we'll, we'll find out if the bicentennial center has some contracts that, that say anything more than that. Because we don't, we don't want to make our own, we just want a level playing field, we don't want to make something more, more restrictive.
And then you're writing there something about allowable advertisement in support of, on the backside of a scoreboard.
On backside of scoreboards.
Kind of your interest, I think, wasn't it?
Thank you.
Yeah, because our, our correspondence that we had with, with Kansas Wesleyan previously was basically that they had taken their backside of their scoreboard and, and converted it to a billboard in an area that didn't allow billboards otherwise, so that, that would need to be pinned down and polished up. So, we will, we will combine those, those two things, and, and basically, for the, the smaller uses that aren't on an arterial street, there'll be one set of standards, and if you're a, a public use of facility on an arterial street, then you'll have the larger provisions for that, and keep, keep the rest in place.
Now come back as action next time?
Yes. Because I think we'll have the whole, the whole...
To reread it.
Whole package to, to do that. And our, our next item there just deals with a, a brush up or up, up-to-date on our comprehensive plan, and the, the concept of what's, what's the difference between a new district, like a public use district, and an, an overlay district. And so, with, with a public use district, you're creating a district, and you're, you're trying to include all the rules and ground rules that you would have for a property that's, that's zoned for public use. In an overlay district, essentially, you're, you're laying it dot, over the top of an established area, and it doesn't really trigger anything unless somebody is, is building something new or doing a major redevelopment. So, the, the concept behind the, the neighborhood center and the community center is that you identify what you want to see in a neighborhood center, a community center, and then you overlay that on top of specific areas, and then as development occurs, or redevelopment occurs over time, then you'd have a set of criteria that, that the new development would have to conform with. So, we gave the example in there of the corner of Crawford and Broadway. And let's say that you had designated that as a community center, and you had established criteria that says all new development has to have the, the building to the front with a sidewalk, and all parking in behind the building. So, if, if you had, that was your criteria, then if Walgreens went in there, they would be, they would be putting their storefront basically on, on the sidewalk, and you would require all their parking to be in behind. And so, the, what would happen is that as, as properties redeveloped or new development occurred, then the look of that would, would change over time, but the overlay doesn't change the rules, you know, that apply to existing businesses. So, we have an overlay that was done in 2006 for the North Ohio over, gateway, and that has been used zero times, because there's not been any new development in that area that's come before the planning commission. But basically, it says, you have I-2 zoning, you still have I-2 zoning, but if you do new development, then your new development has to conform with these standards. And so, that, that is the idea, but the, the neighborhood center idea is, is to try to make it a little more pedestrian-oriented, and push it so that instead of external parking, you have internal parking, and then trying to make it more cohesive in terms of, of having multiple uses. It's kind of hard to pick up, but I think this is supposed to be townhomes there, and then commercial and office here, but the, the orientation is to try to, to push the, the building out towards the street and have the parking in behind, which, to a degree, you have, like at the Heritage at Hawthorne, where if you drive by Ninth Street, you're seeing the buildings, and, and the parking is in behind. So, it's, it's that, that type of approach. But just for your benefit or review, the, the comprehensive plan identified Iron in Ohio, Homes in, which has one vacant parcel, Homes in Crawford, Marymount and Crawford, Cloud in Ohio, Ninth and Cloud, Markley and Magnolia, and Schilling in Ohio as future neighborhood centers. So, the idea is that you would develop criteria for that. As new development occurred, it would have to meet those neighborhood center guidelines. And then, the, the only real community center that was identified was Broadway and Crawford, and I think an argument could be made that the Central Mall area probably already is a community center, but it's not, it's not truly mixed use.
Dean, does that change the setbacks, then, for the building?
Yes. So, John, you, we have the language in there for the North Ohio overlay.
Because some of the advantages of the parking being in the front, you can eat up the easements with the parking, I just, I can't imagine, I, I don't, I mean, I'm sitting there envisioning your idea of saying that Walgreens would have been, I'm not saying you said that, but if Broadway and Crawford and Walgreens was pushed all the way to the front, and the parking in the rear, that gets to be, I just can't even, I can't even imagine that, that that would even be a concept that would make sense.
I don't think it makes sense personally, unless there's some surrounding residential existing, you know, some of the other places you, you mentioned, Ninth and Crawford, for example. I mean, you've got some residential areas very close to those corners. Really, you've got the corner lots, and I'm probably not exact on that, but, but then you would want people from that area to be able to walk to those commercial centers. That makes sense to me. The one at Crawford and Broadway does not make sense in that regard.
Well, if you go farther east on Crawford, at Crawford and Broadway, especially now that the lumber, the old lumberyards vacant and deteriorating, they had quite a bit of land on the south side of the street next to Plaza Drive, they have, they have, they're next to that Mobile Home Park to the north that needs to be redeveloped desperately. If, if all that property could ever be brought together in a comprehensive plan, that, that's enough land to, to do, at least a neighborhood center, if not a community center, I would think, and...
The, the ra, the rationale for that, and if, if you're looking for an example, everything that's being done in the city of Manhattan around the existing mall over there is being done according to these guidelines. And, and the idea is to, it's, it's not, not that you've pushed everything out to, to Tuttle Creek Boulevard, but in Third Street and Fourth Street, if you drive up those streets, or you look at the new motel and convention center that's south of the mall, the i, the idea is that you have, you want to encourage pedestrian flow, and you want to encourage walking and sidewalks, and it's basically taking some of the downtown business district model and pushing it out. And that's essentially what happened, is if you look at historical shopping areas, you can take Aggieville in Manhattan for that matter, where the, the sidewalks, you have a street, you have a sidewalk, you have the, the buildings, and then whatever parking is in behind, as opposed to having, and that is designed and intended to encourage pedestrian use of going place to place without, and, and that's what you have in the area north of the mall in Manhattan, where it's basically one continuous sidewalk, and you can go from business to business to business to business without going across parking lots or driveways of things of that nature. So, the best example of that in the nearby areas is what has been done in the city of Manhattan.
You know, one thing, I don't know this for sure, but just a feel, many, I've seen several of those concepts built in communities where they've developed a kind of a shopping center with a closed box affair, and you have an entrance or two, and then the parking's all internal to that, which gives you a frontage on the outside of no parking, but it seems to sort of have a chilling effect on going there to shop. I mean, it, it doesn't look like anything's happening there, so you don't typically just want to turn in there, and you don't see cars there. It almost looks like it's vacant, unless you're a local and know it's there... It almost looks like it's vacant unless you're a local and know it's there and available. I, I couldn't, I'm concerned about, it's a little like Todd was saying, if Walgreen was set out to the curb and all the parking was in back, you might assume that no one's there and, and people don't typically go to where people aren't, you know, in a shopping area. So I think you'd be careful with that.
You'd have to make sure that, uh, the, the streets were all done. I mean, I can think of, if that was in place at Crawford and Ninth 20 years ago, you wouldn't have had the widening of Crawford Street because you'd had to tear down all the buildings to, to make that happen, but you were able to make that happen because you were able to steal from all the front yards and the parking lots on the front side. So I'm thinking of Ohio and Iron Street, not that it ever would happen, but there needs to be another lane there at some point, in my opinion, because you can't turn into, no, I'm talking about, I'm sorry, Iron and Ohio. Yeah, you can't turn into Taco Bell without getting rear-ended and there's not enough lanes there for that all to happen. So if you were to do that and do a neighborhood center on the property that's across the street, you pushed that all the way to the street, now all of a sudden if Iron and Ohio and everything going north gets bigger, you're never going to add another lane there because you've pushed everything out to the streets.
And it, and that's why each, each one of these areas and why we're, we're going to have a, a steady session on, and Cloud and Ninth, but we, we have areas like that where we have, um, streets that are classified as arterials that have a great deal of traffic and they don't have enough right-of-way to, um, expand the traffic lanes. And Cloud and Ninth is, is one of those. We have plenty of right-of-way for Ohio, but Iron is, is somewhat limited. So all, all of those things assume that, but that, that is the, the concept, um, and it's, it's to have, it's to replicate the Main Street type design with the pedestrian orientation.
Then where do deliveries go? How do they get deliveries in the back doors of these properties?
Off the parking.
Off the parking at the back.
That makes sense.
Um, 40 years ago, North, well, it's unfortunate that it's 500 miles away from here, but if you, if you go to the east slope of Colorado at all, go up North Broadway in North Boulder, Colorado, North Bull, Broadway and North Boulder, when I graduated from college there, looked like the strip of Broadway north of, of Crawford here in Salina. And it was just a mix of old automotive businesses and odds and ends in a lot of respects. Some of it looked a lot like our troublesome area on State Street from State, from Broadway going west. Uh, and that was 40 years ago, but now it is a newer urbanist, uh, shopping multi-use area like we're describing here. The main buildings are two stories high and three stories high and they come right out to Broadway, the street. Uh, there's a Holiday Express Hotel, which is fairly conventional in that it has a fairly large front yard with, with parking on it, but everything else around it is two to three stories, living upstairs, commercial downstairs, and it looks great and it's working real well. Um, so there's just another example. If you're out there in Colorado and you want to take a look at one, there's another one in Longmont, Colorado called Prospect, which is.
And what they have in, uh, the Manhattan Town Center is essentially on Third Street extended, you have Hy-Vee and Dick's Sporting Goods and all those oriented that way. On the backside of it, you have townhomes and apartments that back up to Hy-Vee and Dick's Sporting Goods and those, and that they, they face Fourth Street. So from the, from the residences that are west of Fourth Street, what they're looking at is the front of townhomes that face them and then the commercial is in behind. But in terms of, um, developing whatever the neighborhood center overlay or guidelines would consist of, um, you are perfectly within your purview to say, we like this element, this element, this element, but the zero setback with parking in behind just doesn't appeal to us and that's a perfectly legitimate, um, thing to say. But, but the concept, um, behind the neighborhood center and the community center is to try to take something like Abner described where you have the northwest corner of Broadway and Crawford and it's basically a, a blank slate for redevelopment and you can choose what look and what pattern you want to have there. You establish your community center overlay there and then anybody that comes in that wants to redevelop that has to, has to come and match that pattern. And if, if that pattern is parking in front and attractive landscaping and, and that type of approach, that, that's a neighborhood center as well. It has more to do with, with trying to make the development cohesive and compatible and connect together as opposed to, um, what we've done before. We, and it, it was, it's just the way it was, there wasn't a lot of consciousness about it, but if you want to go from Target to Sam's Club, you have to get in your car, you have to drive out to Marketplace and then drive out in the street and then go back in to do that. Because we as a staff and the planning commission didn't require any type of pedestrian or other connectivity between Target and Sam's Club. And part of it was Walmart Corporation didn't want to have anything to do with Target Corporation and, and that type of thing. But if, if you're taking this approach, you would not approve a plan to have a, a Target store and a Sam's Club next to each other and not have some sort of pedestrian connectivity or sidewalk or things of that nature. So the, the change in pattern or philosophy is that you wouldn't have a center like that where you'd have to get in your car and drive from one parking lot to the other as opposed to just walking on a continuous sidewalk that would connect those two together.
But I think you'd be careful because had that, you put too many overlay districts and neighborhood centers in there, you wouldn't have a Sam's in the first place. I mean, if you put that stipulation on there, I'm concerned of putting too many stipulations on corner lots of saying that we say you have to do this here and somebody come to town and say, I don't have to do that, I'm out of here. I, that's the location I choose, but you're going to make me put my building clear to the front. We like them to the rear with parking in the front that shows people are here. I'm concerned with putting too many overlay districts and neighborhood centers in there because if I'm coming to town to build something, I mean, I want to be respectful to the community, but I'm afraid that if you tell me I have to face my building a certain way or have to put that connectivity in there, Sam's could have just said, we're out of here and we didn't have a Sam's today, which means we don't have an Applebee's and a Red Lobster and all the pad lots as well.
But again, we're not suggesting this at every corner.
Well, we've got five or six.
But that's something else we can look at.
I think it'd work well at Schilling in Ohio.
Again, to me, it, it's a matter of integrating different types of transportation, if you want to put it that way. Are, are there needs, if I wanted, we're talking about bike pass and some other things in the city, and if I want to do that, how accessible are some of these places to me? Now, I don't think we need to do that for Walmart. I mean, Walmart is not a pedestrian app, application until you get inside the building. We probably had a, had bike lanes inside so darn big. So it, that, that's why I made the comment earlier. Again, some of this makes sense in areas perhaps at the corner of, I'm, I'm using Ninth and Crawford as an example only because it's closely surrounded by a very established neighborhood, Highland District and some of those things. I'm not saying we have to push the buildings out, but then let's at least put some things in place that would allow perhaps some or more pedestrian traffic or bike traffic. Alternatives of places where buses could get in and out without having to stop on a main street, things like that. No, I don't, I don't think we ought to do this at every corner also. We need to think about some other.
If you own the corner of Ninth and Crawford, would that not concern you that people are, seven or eight people are putting in, calling it an overlay district? Does that con, I mean, does that concern you to restricting your property now that you own?
Can I, can I actually, this is related, um, so I'm not, I'm not trying to take it off track, but can I ask a question with this then that, uh, that the original comprehensive plan had these areas that are in question identified, but then with the addition of the three new concepts to the comprehensive plan, were then these original areas reconsidered or does that need, do those need to be reconsidered now because we're taking into consideration these, these three new concepts that may then change where these should go?
Right. I'm, our job is to report to you what, what the adopted plan and plan map show. You, and on page three there have listed Iron and Ohio, Homes and Crawford, and you say, boy, that's way, way too many or that's too restrictive. I could see this corner or this corner being a future neighborhood center, but I can't see this.
So page three, that's the original, those were the original, prior to the new concepts, that was the original map.
Is, is we have, we have a land use map and said, we have the, uh, the various committees and groups that looked at the, uh, the updated comprehensive plan and these two concepts and said, well, this, the consultant said, these are two concepts, what areas in the community potentially fit that, these were ones that were identified. Any, anything that's on this list is on a plan, but a, a plan doesn't mean anything until you have something in your development regulations that say this is identified in the plan and to get from where we are today to where you want to be in the plan, this, this is the concept. So I said, we, we do not have, um, I don't know if you want to go back to North Ohio again, John, if you can call that up and just go to the, the beginning of that. So obviously there, there was a purpose for that. You can keep, um, scrolling, John. So the, uh, the, the permitted uses are basically the same. These, these were uses that the city commission, and I guess, why don't you scan up a little farther, John? No, you're too far, the application. So the, these apply to new development, major redevelopment, major building additions. So that, um, if, I guess, and the, the other example would be the, the corner of Crawford and Ohio. Two of those corners have completely redeveloped. There was a filling station at the southwest corner that is now a Subway restaurant that looks much different than what the DX station looked like there before. And the corner where there's currently McDonald's used to be an Amoco gas station and that, that corner looks different. And the reason the corner looks different is because the redevelopment was subject to the current regulations, which has setback and landscaping and things like that in it. This basically says that in, within these areas, those intersections identified that would then be mapped, that any new development, major redevelopment or major building additions would be subject to that. The existing development is not going to be subject to the overlay. So it's, it's not impacting anybody who's already there, it's only impacting if you're starting over. And if you do start over, this is, is what you're going to look like. So the, the corner where you have the convenience store and the A&amp;W and, and Long John Silver's, that can stay that way forever as long as they don't rebuild anything. But if they do, then what, what do you want to see back and what do you want it to look like and, and the pattern to be? And if, if everything that we have in place already is sufficient, then there, there isn't any reason to have an overlay. But, but the idea behind these overlays was to take some of these things like pedestrian access and bicycle and pedestrian connection back to neighborhoods and orientation of the buildings and sidewalks and things like that and to make sure that they're incorporated.
So what I'm, what I'm driving at is that with the addition of these new concepts, which I think is kind of what we're struggling with here with, with how this is going to change with the urban residential, the neighborhood centers, community centers and such, that then the originally mapped areas can then also be revised. I think something like this has a lot of application when you look at that, uh, North Ohio, kind of that, that area there, uh, you know, is you look for, to future development. Uh, and I don't, I don't know that we want to get hung up on that, you know, or get hung up on the concept so much because we're also worried about, you know, specifically Ninth and Cloud and Cloud and Ohio or Ninth and Crawford or whatever, you know, that can be, I think, revised too as we go along.
And I, I think that, you know, if, if you have that on, on a big picture, you listed those intersections there and you said, you know, staff, before we, we decide that we really think that's appropriate to be a neighborhood center, we want you to bring back information on ownership and parcel sizes and how much right-of-way we have and all those things, that's perfectly appropriate to say before you want to declare that a neighborhood center. You want to know more about the specifics of what's there and who owns it and how much they own and what right-of-way we have and what ability we have to widen or expand or roadways or any of those things. Those are all perfectly legitimate things to ask us.
And I think that's just what I was saying was you can't, I just don't want this commission to take that lightly because.
They're not all the same.
If I bought a piece of ground 10 years ago and said, man, that corner someday I've got a great plan for an L-shaped shopping center and I'm saving my money and all of a sudden 10 guys decide that that can no longer be put there because they decided they wanted an overlay district, that, that's, that's not what it was when I bought it, it's not what my intent was, but we decided for that to be an overlay district. I'm just concerned that, that we have the power to do that, of somebody who's there without any, without the property owner saying, that's what I want my property be, to be, to look like.
Yes, and any of these, what these are, neighborhood centers on a plan, before there was any overlay district adopted and was placed at Iron and Ohio, every property owner that owned property there would get notice of that and there would be a, a public hearing on that before that occurred. But, but this is in there to, you know, some of you are new on the commissioner, you may not know that these are, you know, seven corner locations that were identified and you as planning commissioners now say, well, that, that seems like too many, that maybe we ought to focus on one or two, um, that are blank slates or particularly important or whether this could actually work and that's what we should focus on, that's perfectly legitimate. But no, no rules can change on any owner or any overlay be adopted or anything without those owners getting notice. And that's essentially what happened on the North Ohio gateway was that these regulations were pretty well adopted. We identified the area that should be the overlay. The regulations and the overlay map were sent to all those owners and then the planning commission had a public hearing.
I don't, I don't really want anything we do to be kind of a discouragement to development of business. I wished we were growing fast enough and robust enough that we could develop overlay districts and they'd be built out tomorrow like Overland Park or Blue Valley, but right now, honestly, I'd be happy to see a new business go in the heart, right in the middle of the street and some of our streets just to have new business in this town. So I think we don't want to be prohibiting development, but we've got to guide development to where it's attractive. It's hard for me to visualize what these would look like, you know, if I had a schematic where I could see what this kind of looked like after it's developed, but a good example is if you just take Ninth and Crawford right now, you look, we've got, there's a former church, I think, sitting on the corner of, corner of Ninth and Crawford that's right up to the street and, and the parking is behind it. Then on, and then on the other, what was it, Safeway Store? I don't know, it was before my time.
It was originally a grocery store and a church.
I haven't been here that long. On the other side then you've got the, the convenience stores and so forth that are setback. You know, that, that Safeway Store or whatever it was, looks misplaced to me, it's right on top of the street and you can do nothing there. You could, as Todd was saying, couldn't widen the street if you needed to, you have no sight, a line of sight there. It's, it's misplaced, it's too close to the streets, you have to be careful with that. I think, I mean, it's just a good example. If you think about that location, you want to get things parked right on top of the street. Downtown it's different, but.
If you, if you're in residential.
The average sidewalk width downtown is about 10 feet. So clearly if you had a, a development pattern where you had a street and then you had like a four-foot wide sidewalk with a building sitting on. a four-foot wide sidewalk with a building sitting on top of it, that, that doesn't work.
And that's kind of what that is.
You have to look at rights of way, you have to look at streetscape, the ability to have those things. But I, I think what we would probably have to do is give you, um, more, um, concrete examples of that. The one that is, um, pointed out the most and, and replicated, um, is there's a shopping area called Zona Rosa that's in Kansas City North. And, well, legends to a lesser degree, but the, the Zona Rosa in Kansas City North is basically a, a shopping center that has taken these, um, approaches. And so they, they have interior roads and all the stores and everything are right on the road with sidewalks, and the parking is in behind or in parking garages. And that, that is cited as an example of pedestrian friendly or, or walkable. But, but that, the idea is to encourage connect, I mean, mo- most people, if they're window shopping or doing anything in downtown Salina, they're, they're walking down a block on a sidewalk. They're not going to this store, going to their car, driving to the next. They're, they're doing everything on foot. So the, the idea behind this is to make sure that new development or the new development pattern is accommodating to pedestrians, bicycles, um, transit, as opposed to just making everything completely automobile oriented. But what, what you need to do is, is look at this list of those nine intersections, drive out and look at them. Ask us to have a, uh, specific steady session on each one of those and, and tell you what's there, who owns it, how big the parcels are, what the right of way is, and all those things. And, and we can do that for you.
You know, I, I don't want to sound simplistic, but you can't build the same way in nine, today that you were building in 1950. That there's a, there's an evolution to development. I don't necessarily see this as a deterrent to development, but something that I can actually enhance and, and, and work within, uh, I don't want to use the word trend, but I, I think that that's probably a good word, you know? That as, as the evolution occurs, you need to be able to capture what, uh, what the current market is. And you can make a case that, that, that this is more development friendly because it's, it's, it's reducing the segmentation that we currently have through the roads. And you've got this little area here that's got to fit into this box, and you have this little box here. It's blending it together and it's blending in the mixed uses. Uh, it's not going to be right in, in every area, but as a concept, I agree with it. And I, I agree with the review in certain areas to be able to put that in there. Nobody's going to, it's not going to be stamped down on it, on, on anybody, you know? They, they have the ability to come in here and then say, I don't believe that this works for my particular, you know, my, 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 my lot, or my, my, my land. But I, I think that this actually can stimulate, if you look at what's going on in Manhattan too, it can stimulate development. And I think that's a good thing. And I'm, I'm sensitive to not wanting to be a deterrent to development, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're not trying to think of, of how do we keep things the same when you need to be able to change to be able to keep up with these things in order to even bring development interest in.
I'm not suggesting by any means keeping it the same, but I'm saying mistakes can be made, like the Safeway Store we just talked about. Way too close to the street. It, it just doesn't work there now, by a day's short. But then I'd like to see Zona Rosa, I'd like to see a Google Earth view of that and see what it looks like. Then we'd have better feel.
It's a shopping center.
Well, so if it's held up as a model, let's put it on the screen here next time and look at it.
But if that's the way everything's going, why then is Dillons choosing to put their $14 million project all the way to the back and the parking in the front? Why, I mean, and if that was an overlay district that said it had to be done that way, would Dillons have said, look, we don't, we don't want that all the way up on the Cloud Street and our parking in the back, uh, from there, and we choose not to, to build there? But I, I'm with Ken saying that, and you can come back with all of these things of saying Kansas City does this and Dallas does that. I've had many of ideas that worked great in Dallas, but they didn't work very well in Salina, Kansas. When you have 7 million people or 2 million people that you can cater to and who are looking to come into that place, they can put those regulations on, and Pottery Barn is going to say, you know what? I don't really like them, but that's where we want to be in Johnson County, so we're going to do it. I don't believe Salina is that place yet for us to be putting restrictions on major intersections, for us to say, we potentially could lose somebody, even at a later date. The, the new owner may say that's great, but the new person who wants to invest the million dollars may say, that doesn't work for me. I'm moving on to Junction City or Manhattan or Hutch, somewhere else I can put another location because I don't want to build my building that way.
That, I mean, that, that is essentially it when somebody says, how come the Walmart in Overland Park looks this way and ours looks like that? And the answer is because Overland Park told them that that's the way their Walmart had to look if they want to build there. And places like Overland Park and places like that have a little bit more leverage because Walmart wants to be there bad enough that they're willing to do, to do that. But it, it, every, every community has to decide what its standard is. But I, I can tell you that when the Hy-Vee was proposed in the city of Manhattan, they contacted me and, and had some information, and I furnished them with plans for a Hy-Vee store that was built in Iowa, and it was built in Iowa with a zero setback and with the parking in behind because the city, the city required them to put in fake storefront windows along the street, and the, the building has a 12-foot sidewalk in front, and it sets right on the street, and the entrance is on the side, and the parking is in behind because it was on a main street. And the city there decided that they wanted it to look like a main street, so that's the way Hy-Vee designed it. If, if you had a set of criteria that said, at Cloud and Ohio, that's a neighborhood center, and we want the, the buildings to be oriented towards the front with parking in behind, and Dillons wanted to be there, then they'd have built the store close to Cloud with the parking in behind. It's, it's simply a matter of they built what they built there because our current regulations allow it to be built that way.
You also have to consider timing, just with the economy and with the market. I mean, right now, you're obviously not going to have a whole heck of a lot of interest in, uh, demand for building urban residential because there's not the demand there to buy it. So you wouldn't want to have to press us down and say, well, no, this is the way that you have to do this because, uh, you know, you're, you're not going to get anybody who's interested in building, uh, much in the way of urban residential because of the lack of demand there, you know, in, in, in that market. So there is the whole timing piece that you have to consider, and right now, probably not, you know? But, uh, but, but down the road and for future, when you have a more vibrant market for something like this, then I, I think that, that, that then starts to change a little bit in the, makes it seem a little bit more approachable and viable.
I think what, what we will do is we will do, we've got those nine neighborhood centers and then in Crawford and Broadway, and we'll develop a template, and we'll give you information about parcel sizes and current zoning and current ownership and right of way widths and street widths, and we'll, we'll look at those, um, at steady sessions with you on a location by location basis, and then we'll get you better, um, physical examples or photographs of, of what those places look like, including aerial views of when you talk about pedestrian oriented or zero setback or things of that nature, what, what does that mean?
I like that.
Because it, there's no substitute for physical examples. And, um, the other thing that I would add, um, as to why what they're doing in Manhattan works is because the city of Manhattan owned all of that property. And they said, since we own this and we're the, we, we control the sale and development of it, this is what it's going to look like. Because they didn't have any private property owners.
Can we aim in a domain like they did on North Broadway and, and, uh, consume all the property, do the same thing? That's how they took that property.
Yeah. Basically, they acquired all that property and then they worked with a, a developer and, and controlled every single thing that happened to it.
Right.
But that, that's what we'll come back, um, with you on as, as follow-up action.
Is it staff's opinion that if you tell them the way you want it, that's the way they'll do it? Or is it like church? If they don't like the minister, they'll either not give money or not come to church?
Well, they're, whether it's the state of Kansas or the state of Colorado or whatever, wherever you go, whatever municipality or jurisdiction has, has, is in the strongest position economically, they can generally afford to be, um, the strictest from a regulatory side because if it costs Walmart more to redesign or modify their standard building to be in Overland Park, they think they're going to make up for it. So, um, it, it, and the, the pendulum has gone back and forth because a lot of those places have said, well, we're being too strict, we're being too regulatory, and, and with this slowdown, we're being too strict. So it, it, it is, it is a pendulum that way, and Salina just has to find what our community norm and, and balance is. And I mean, my, my example is that, that Casey's general store has about seven different models of stores. And, you know, from their, their Cadillac version to their version that they build in very small communities. And they will basically build one of those seven based on what the community says their standard is. And if the community has zero standards, then they're going to build their, their pre-engineered metal building. And if the, um, community has standards, they're going to build like the ones that they have built here.
Can we move on to the next item?
Yep.
Number four, there, we'll review the rules of procedure for conducting the meetings.
We are gonna, we're seeking some clarification from the city attorney, but we wanted to put these in your hands because basically, um, these are rules of procedure that applied to city commission meetings, and basically they've been extended to apply to all city boards and commissions, um, except that boards and commissions can have their own bylaws and operating rules as long as they don't conflict. Um, so what, we're seeking some guidance on that to, uh, say, we've, we've got planning commission bylaws, they're in your notebooks that are at your table each meeting, and the city attorney is reviewing those to render opinion whether those are, are inconsistent or conflicting with many of these things that we're doing already. Some of our boards and commissions that are advisory don't have bylaws like you have, so this is intended to fill in those gaps. The other thing that's in there that, that's not, um, that, one of the reasons for this being adopted is, um, a section, it's section five in the resolution, but it deals with youth liaisons. And before, we didn't have any provision for having youth liaisons on boards like the planning commission or Board of Zoning Appeals or groups like that. So, um, it's basically saying each board may allow at least two youth members to be appointed. Um, any individual between the ages of 15 through 20 attending secondary or post-secondary schools may submit an expression of interest form for consideration of appointment. And, uh, then the city commission would, would look through those, and, um, so we would have the ability to have a, um, youth liaison on the planning commission, and they would get the same packet and attend the meetings and, um, be welcome to provide input. The only thing they couldn't do would be to have a, a vote on a rezoning case or a plat or something like that that was legally binding. But the idea is to try to encourage youth members in that 15 to 20 age group, um, that could be liaisons and, and get involved. I think arts and humanities and parks and recreation have had youth members periodically over, over time. And so the, the main effect of, of this is to actually set guidelines for that and to make it eligible through the, the appointment process to have youth members. So we'd, we'd have to squeeze an extra chair in, because I think we only have nine microphones, but, um, find a way to do that. But if, if you are in contact in your daily, um, or weekly routine and you're aware of, of somebody you think might be a good youth member or have an interest in the future of planning of Salina, it would be good to encourage them to submit an expression of interest form. But that, that's the primary change was that we didn't, there wasn't any provision for how, um, to get youth potentially involved in our boards and commissions.
The youth were originally supposed to participate in the chambers?
I think the, the original thought was that they would, they would be ones that were in, uh, the Leadership Salina Youth Group, and they, they would certainly be, I mean, that, that's a good pool to draw from, but the, the way the policy is set up, it, it's not, it's not limited to, uh, people that are graduates of the Leadership Salina Youth Program, but that, that would be a good place to recruit from. If, if somebody has a good experience with that and they want to follow that up by getting involved in a board, um, our challenge would be to say they, they want to get involved with the planning commission as opposed to parks and recreation or arts and humanities or some other group. But we put that in there both so you would have that, but, but also to bring to your attention that that has now, um, set up the guidelines for how that would work and how youth liaisons would get appointed. So we, we as a staff will, we're kind of in a, have our eyes open in recruiting mode, but if you, uh, interact with somebody that is in that chamber program or who you interact with and you think they might be a good candidate or, or people in schools, whether it's government teachers or others, um, that, that'd be a good place to, to look at it.
Questions or comments? Update the flood plan remapping process.
We, uh, got a response back from, um, FEMA to the protest that was filed on the maps that, that go all the way back to about February 2010. And one of our concerns was the fact that they, we've had somewhere between 1,800 and 2,000 letters of map change issued in Salina, and FEMA only had records of less than half of those. And they have spent all this time trying to get their database built up, and they came closer this time, but still, um, didn't complete that. But basically, what has happened is the, we had proposed flood maps that, that we had out on our website, and we had maps for individual subdivisions. And the number one thing that, that lenders or realtors or buyers were interested in is, well, is this, this property's not in the flood plain now, but is it going to be in on the new map? And we were getting a lot of inquiries and, and concerns about that. Somebody didn't want to buy a home and then three years into it, all of a sudden have to get flood insurance because of a new map. But that, that new map has been rolled up and taken home by FEMA, and, um, basically they're, they're going to start over. And they're going to start over, um, first of all, if things get properly delayed, we'll have our levee certified by then, and, uh, then they'll remap the city with the assurance that our levee provides a hundred-year level of protection. And then it will just be focusing on the areas inside the levee, um, that are actually flood-prone and get those accurately depicted. But the consultant- But the consultant that the city hired to help us with our appeal and protest is the firm that's going to be producing the new maps. And we think they're going to be much, from what they've learned being here, helping us with our protests and appeal, I think we can have a higher level of confidence that their maps that they produce will be more accurate and have a better feel for actual local conditions than the ones that we were given before. So basically, the work on remapping is on hold for 2012 and, and nothing would start over in terms of a new remapping until 2013. But when that happens, the whole thing will happen again, we'll have the maps out, we'll, there'll be review and comment period, there'll be public meetings, we'll have the ability to protest or appeal those maps. So the short answer is that it's like everything that happened over the last two, two and a half years didn't happen and we're right back to, we're using our existing maps and nothing's going to change in 2012. So if, if, if somebody calls in today to the city county building and they say, I want to know whether this house on Sarah Lane is going to be in on the new map, our answer is there is no new map. And so you don't have to worry about what the new map shows. So we've, we've taken all that information off our website. We still have information on, on our website and we have, I think Sue said, 520 email subscribers that we send out updates to about what's going on with the flood maps and the levy certification. And that's what you have in your packet is what we have sent to those people.
So the 1,800 people or so are in the same boat today that they were before?
Well, basically, we had, we had two issues with the list that they sent out. First thing I did when we got the list was look for my house and it wasn't on there. And then I started looking and looking and, and realized that they were way short. The other thing is that, I mean, and Martin Avenue comes as an example, they would have a house sitting next to another house and they would say that the letter of map change on this house will be good under the new map, but the letter of change, map change on the house next door would not. And it, it made no sense whatsoever. So now basically what we're going to end up with is that every, they're going to have a database with every letter of map change accounted for and basically every map change that's been done will be revalidated or honored under the new map because that was the number one question we were getting from people is, do you have a record of my map change? And for many of them, we didn't. And then do you know whether that map change is going to be good under the new map? And we couldn't tell them. Or the list we got said it's not going to be good on the new map and they would ask why and our answer would be, we don't know.
So is it a good time for somebody to get their, their property loma-ed out? When do they, when do they put a date on that? From now to 2013? Can they loma their property out and it would be good?
Anybody, anybody, I mean, with nearly 2,000 map changes, we're running out of properties to take out, but anybody who is in on the current map and wants to get a map amendment, they can have a survey done and it's, it's going to be based on the current map that we have, just as it has been for the last 25 years.
So when will they set that, will they set a date, time period that says?
Until there's actual new maps adopted to replace these, you can still get lomas on these maps.
Dean, have I understood this correctly? And I, the question is, why didn't we get the levy certified in 2008 to 2010? That's the question. And then in reading that, since the levy is not certified, it appears FEMA is now going to map the city as if the levy didn't exist, which means much of the city will be in a floodplain. Is that right? Unless we get the levy certified.
FEMA came out and they had a meeting with us and basically said, all right, we gave you two years to certify the levy, you didn't do it.
And why didn't we?
There is no, there's no city in the United States that has their levy certified yet.
There's none, none certified.
And, and nobody did it with, they set up this arbitrary two-year period. They didn't allow for extensions or extenuating circumstances or anything. Wichita, Kansas was the first city to attempt certification and they don't have it done yet.
Jeez.
And so what happened is they came out here and said, well, there's no provision for an extension, so we have no choice but to map you as if the levies don't exist. Communities around the country went to Congress and said, that makes no sense. And so Congress blocked FEMA from remapping any communities as if the levy doesn't exist. And they said, you've got to come up with a middle ground that, that doesn't have the fiction of pretending that that levy's not there. And so they gave FEMA a time period to develop a new criteria for levies that aren't certified. And FEMA hasn't done that yet, so therefore all mapping of cities with levies is on hold. So the, it's basically business as usual on the existing maps. We're still working towards getting the levy certified.
Would we be the first city in the nation that had it certified? Then you said, none are.
There, there are none that met their, their PAL agreement obligation. City of Wichita still is. I'm not aware of any city in Kansas that has had their levy certified.
Oh, I thought you said the nation, but Kansas, okay.
But, but we're all, it's a nationwide remapping process, but the...
Do they have some new methodology or technology coming that's supposed to assist them and?
Um, they, they do have some improved technology for measuring the topography, which is, is the LiDAR and that LiDAR is, has been done and it's being reviewed right now and that, that will be used for the levy certification and also the same group, AMEC, is recertifying the levy, is also going to be doing the new flood mapping, so that, that will help as well. But I, I don't think there's any doubt that whatever new product is released for remapping will be more accurate than what we received the first time. But we wanted to give you that update to basically say that if, if people say, where are we on the new flood maps? The answer is, there are no new flood maps. They've been rolled up and taken home.
All I can say, Dean, as a real estate broker, don't change your phone number because we've got it on our contract. It's disclosed. That's who people are going to call is you guys.
Yeah, I, I saw that on the website, on the email blast that went out to the 520 people, it said, if they had any questions, call me, so.
Yeah.
It, it worked.
Anything else under other matters?
We do have one other matter for you that, that Dustin is going to hand out to you and it is a matter that we want to get a motion and vote on. We would have put it on your agenda had we received it earlier.
Oh, boy.
One of the things we do is that in our planned districts, when somebody has a site plan that goes through planning commission and in this case, city commission action, that site plan is, is binding on that property. So the only thing that can be built on that property is what the approved plan is. And what you have in front of you is a request, the, there was an application that was approved in May of 2010 by you for the construction of a new Holiday Inn on South Ninth Street out in front of Lowe's. And the, our ordinance requires that somebody who has an approved site plan for a planned district like that obtain a building permit within 18 months or that site plan expires and it, it just goes back to what it was. So we, we sent information out to the developer and owner there, Deepa Hospitality, and said, you have not obtained a building permit for your hotel within the 18-month period. And so your options are to withdraw it, in which case we go back to just a vacant lot and having a new plan submitted, or there's a provision there that they can make a request to the planning commission for an extension of time to obtain a building permit. So the letter that you have there on top is a letter from the Liberty Hotel Group and they're asking you to extend the life of their approved site plan so that they can obtain a building permit based on that plan.
Is that recommendation over there?
As long as they, they understand and what their letter says is that all the changes that they're working on are interior and there's no exterior changes. So that, that, from our standpoint, all the, the site issues were addressed and you can see in the letter that was from me to Mr. Patel, that's a summary of all the conditions that the planning commission approved as part of this. And as long as they conform with all those things and don't change the plan, we, we don't have any concern about this plan being followed. What, what you don't want to see happen is if, if these plans lasted forever, then somebody could buy this thinking they're getting a vacant commercial lot and then staff says, no, this isn't a vacant commercial lot. The only thing you can build here is a hotel according to this plan. That's the only thing we can issue a permit for. So we don't want these binding plans to last forever and so if, if they get their plan approved and they never build anything, we don't want that lot tied up with that plan. But they have indicated in this letter that they're still working on it and that the only changes they have will be interior. So we don't see anything problematic about giving them a one-year extension, but that needs to be done by you by a motion agreeing to grant that request.
And technically, they don't have to be here to represent their request?
Their letter is representing their, that.
Is there any discussion?
This is the far southwest corner of that tract then? It's the?
Yes. It is the, the entrance drive that comes in, that matches up with Riffle Drive and has the Lowe's sign in it. It is south, south of that, so it's in the southwest corner of that development.
You know, we've approved these extensions before and I think it's been no problem. I would suggest we approve, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this extension based on their request.
Second? Any other discussion? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will communicate to them that you have granted an extension and said, if we had time to put this into a report, we would have, the Lowe's project there actually, they got planning commission approval and didn't obtain a building permit within 18 months and they had to get an extension. So it's, it's not completely out of the, the norm, but that will, that will give them the comfort to move ahead with their interior changes. And a lot of what those interior changes are not required by us, they're required by Holiday Inn in order to have their franchise. So I believe Holiday Inn has asked them to make some changes in order to be a Holiday Inn franchise.
15,000 square feet.
So that, that's all we have for you this evening. We will meet on the 21st and we, right next door, well, not next door to the Murphy Oil, we'll, we'll have a final site plan for you for a relocated Dimaru Steakhouse on Outlet there in front of Lowe's and south of the corner lot there. And then Celine County Commission has requested that the city of Salina annex Magnolia Road and Markley Road and the majority of that land is abutting property that's outside the city limits. So those affected owners outside the city have been notified of that and invited to a planning commission public hearing on the 21st.
So we're talking the south side of Magnolia?
Well, basically the, the roadway would be annexed even though if, once you cross the bridge, all the property that's on the north side of Magnolia and all the property that's on the west side of Markley is outside the city limits. And so those people have an opportunity to be notified of that and become aware that we're annexing or potentially annexing part of their property. Because this is a situation where there's not actual right-of-way there because it's not platted and the people own to the center of the road. So the road actually belongs to them, subject to an easement. And that's, that's why they're being notified, so they're invited to come here on the 21st and, and have any questions answered about that and tell you whether they think that's a good idea or not.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, move.
Second?
Second. Home favor?
This can.
The best vaccine for cholera.